I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission of April 4th, and please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's, we'll, the, all the members of the commission, except for Commissioner Bay, are here, and the next order of business is the election of officers, since our chairperson has moved on to bigger and better things. So as vice-chair, I'm sitting here temporarily until further notice. Can I have a nomination for chairperson of the, Ms. Loretano?
I'll nominate our illustrious vice-chair to be the chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Any other nominations? Can I have a movement, move that the nominations be closed, and let's have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Okay, we need to elect a vice-chair. I'd like to open the nominations for a vice-chairperson of the planning commission, please. And with the, with the, we take a little recess for Mr. Bay. Would the clerk please recognize that Commissioner Bay is now in attendance? And Commissioner Bay, you missed out on the election of the chairman, but we're still, we're-
I didn't get elected?
No.
All right.
I had to be present to win.
Well, we are, we are taking nominations for the vice-chair for the commission, and I have opened that.
I'll nominate Commissioner Bay.
Could I respectfully decline and in turn nominate Commissioner DeBrocker?
You bet.
Okay, I need, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second then.
All right. Any other nominations? All right, I'm closing the nominations. Let's have a vote, please. All in favor of Mr. DeBrocker serving as vice-chair?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. And I think we can move the next time we do this. Is that okay?
No need to.
All right. No need to, no need to move. Okay, next order of business is, what, do you want to move that out? Next order of business is the minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning zoning commission held on March 21st, 2007, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes dated March 21st, 2007, as distributed.
I have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second for Mr. DeBrocker. Any comments from the commission? Corrections? I'd like to have a vote on approving the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Public comments. First of all, would everybody make sure that they have signed in with our staff? We lost our table from the outside, and if you have not signed in, we'd like to have a record of who does attend on the minutes. The second thing is, now is, if you want to speak on an item on the agenda, please complete a speaker's card, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Before you speak, please state your name, address, and your association with the city of Goodyear. Okay. Does anybody wish to speak now on a non-agenda item? Moving along, we have a disclosure of ex parte communications, please. Any, any on this side? Any on this side? I had ex parte communications with a member of the Goodyear planning staff before this case. Okay, moving on to number eight. Old business. Case number 05200-00017, the Wood Corporate Campus Rezone. A public hearing to consider request to rezone approximately 242 acres of land generally located along the east side of Australia Parkway, from Goodyear Boulevard on the north to Elwood Road on the south, from Agricultural AG District to Plenary Development, for a mixed-use development containing commercial, hospitality, industrial, business, office, park, and a baseball, spring training facilities. The applicant is Rose Properties Southwest, and at this time I will open a public hearing, and yes, I like the gavel, and ask for the staff presentation.
We're looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For the record, Karen Craver, senior planner of the city. I think one of the best ways to get started with this, on, with you, is just to go through some pictures for the project, and Mr. Jones will have a PowerPoint presentation that will provide even more detail for you. The subject property is located near the city, the future city center. It is located on the east side of Australia Parkway. Ballpark Village, which is where the future Cleveland Indians stadium is going to be located, is north of Lower Buckeye Parkway and Wood Corporate Campus, and the Cleveland Indians' practice field is, is to the south of Lower Buckeye Parkway, up against Bullard This plan provides a little more detail. The northern 57 acres of the development is going to be the mixed-use component. It'll be a mix of retail, hospitality, commercial, office, hotel development, residential development, and again, here's the stadium in the center. This area down here will be primarily a business park development, office development, small amount of commercial to the south, and practice fields here for the one stadium, and then, or for the one team, I'm sorry. And should we be lucky enough to get a second team, those practice fields and clubhouse will go down in this area. In order to, I'm sure Dustin has some of these in his presentation, but again, this gives you some more detail. This is the northern 57 acres, it's the mixed-use development. There's commercial development, hotel development in the pink colors, convention center associated with one of the hotels, residential in this area, primarily residential here, residential over top of retail further to the west towards Australia Parkway, and again, our stadium in the center of the project. We have several stipulations contained in our report. We are, of course, recommending approval of the project. We're anxious to get the stadium and the spring training facilities going, but we do have stipulations that deal with some issues that give us concern, and those are primarily with the parking that's been provided. We have a shared parking analysis that was provided as part of the PAD document. You have it included in your materials. One of the, one of the things that they also are addressing in their development program is the provision of the 3,000 parking spaces that are required pursuant to the MOU regarding the Cleveland Indians stadium. And as you can see from this document, the 3,000 parking spaces are being spread significantly throughout the site, and we have concerns about the location of those spaces, and also some of the analysis that was done in the study regarding the shared parking calculations. And as I said, we're anxious to see this project move forward, and we would like to do so, but we have several issues that we'd like to have resolved before it goes on to council. And those are primarily stipulations 27 and 28. They're on page five of their staff report. 27 deals with the parking, location, calculations, assumptions that are made, some mistakes that are actually made in the study where one table discusses one square footage and another table discusses another for the same use. And then the design guidelines also need to be revised to indicate that they are the dominant controlling factor in the design of the facility, not the CCRs. So staff would appreciate it if the planning and zoning commission would support our request to get these issues clarified before going on to city council. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff?
Well, I have a question, and I'll ask it. Maybe it should go to the developer, but the 3,000, on this chart that you have up, the 3,000, or 2,000 parking spaces in Area 5?
Yes, sir.
Does, does that go away with later development? Because this, I, if I read this correctly, this is the Area 5, and this shows some office buildings and less parking up there. Is that a true statement?
Yes, initially, you know, we're going to have the stadium, or the practice fields are going to go in first, and then the stadium is going to open up for the following season, and the parking spaces that's required for those facilities will be in first. It will be a matter of time before the private development comes online, and then those spaces are, are replaced with structured parking in other areas that will be utilized for the, for the baseball parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff on this side of the question? Mr. DeBrocker?
Karen, what does stipulation 1 say? I, I've read it several times, and-
That's legalese given to me by our city attorney, and it basically says that, you know, there are compliance with PAD zoning district criteria, City of Goodyear engineering standards, public works construction, Maricopa Association of Government standards that have to be adhered to unless, of course, there are things within the PAD that vary from that that get approved by both you and council.
Can you reword that one to say what you just said?
Okay.
Because what, what I found was it didn't say anything.
Okay.
It said contrary, notwithstanding anything to the contrary. Well, that's the opposite of, but what I'm getting at is you have the subject, but you don't have a verb. You don't have, I don't know what it is.
It's legalese, and it never makes sense, does it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Okay, yeah, please do.
Is it my turn?
Oh, no.
Oh, Mr. Bay. Sorry. Mr. Bay, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to, and maybe the question really is for the submitted, the applicant, but I guess I wanted to ask staff because it sounds like there's, the issue is the proximity of the parking spaces, and, and I guess you had an earlier slide that illustrated the actual ballpark city and several parking structures throughout, along with several mixed-use facilities, and sounded like, I mean, you know, from first glance, it looks like there's a lot of activity that's going on in the parking, sort of herds of people towards, towards the ballpark, and include the, and the foot travel, is all of these other activities that's going on along there. So could you kind of explain to me a little bit what the, is it, we don't have the 3,000 parking spots, or is it just the way that they're positioned?
We, we have the 3,000 parking spaces, but yes, we're concerned about the proximity of those 3,000 parking spaces during the initial years of the Cleveland Indians occupying the stadium and utilizing the practice fields. You know, it's, as I said before, unless, you know, and this would be great and wonderful if, if all this occurred at once.
Yeah, and I guess that's what my question is.
But that's quite an assumption to be made, and I think one that we're not comfortable making. And so for a time, it is going to be the stadium and the practice fields and just the parking that's provided for it. And also, another issue that comes to play is that this isn't just the Cleveland Indians stadium to be used during spring training, it's also going to be a city recreation facility. So, you know, our 4th of July celebrations could move to here, other events throughout the city could move to here. So, you know, in, in the peak of summer, it could be that the parking provided is quite a distance away from, from where the activities are going to occur. We're concerned about that.
Okay, then I guess we'll have to hear from the applicant, so I'll cede to you.
So, thank you. Karen, I, I have some serious concerns about the parking and the parking location where you, if you could put up the other, the 8.6 Phase 1 public parking, there, Area 5 is, is 2,000 parking spots, and it says it's not paved, which leads me to believe that it, we're going to be parking on dirt, or grass, or whatever is out there. I believe we are going to have some dust violations, and the city is going to be responsible for that. So not paved is, is an unacceptable situation. The second thing I, and this is something that I believe needs to be worked out with the SUN MP, is there is an assumption of a road that connects from one, parking location one, which is angled parking, I believe, and to location two. I'm not sure what SUN MP's plans are for that road, or what the, what the dimensions are, or, or is this development dictating the, the plan for that road, or the ultimate location and plan for that road? So that's another concern. My third concern is that I took the little scale that's on the bottom of this picture, and I measured it from parking lot five to the entrance of the ballpark, you were looking at a 1,700 to 1,800-foot walk. Are we, is the developer planning on doing jitneys like in Disney World, or are we going to have buses? Because people are not going to walk seven, three, a third of a mile to, from their parking spot, and that's the closest spot to this parking. So quite honestly, this is, while I want to fast-track this, this parking situation is pretty unacceptable as far as this commissioner is concerned. I just want to go on record with staff on that. And I just have some real concerns about, you know, what, you know, what we are doing. The last thing is, when we get to the design guidelines, I was, you know, nice pictures, but I was underwhelmed. I, I think we need to have a little bit more site-specific things that are planned. The other thing is the phasing. There, there's Phase 1, and then there's the future, and I would like to see a more detailed phasing plan for this. Otherwise, you know, as I've said before, we're building a bridge because a developer didn't, wasn't able to secure the financing as a result of that, and I don't want the city to be building a stadium in addition to building, just after they finish building a bridge, that this developer isn't able to complete their obligations. So unless you have any further comments, or my commissioners, I'll let the applicant speak. Ms. Loretano?
I have a quick one. With regard to the parking, why not consider a parking structure or something, so it could be closer, and you could put more spaces in there, like a two-story or whatever parking structure? Was that even thought of for them, or?
I can't speak to the developer's thought process, I'm, my only-
And I'll say that one for them.
Yeah, thanks.
Shaun, Mr. Lex, Mr. Lex, please.
Karen, I, on the design guidelines-
Yes.
It skips from page 43 to page 46.
And I-
Is there a typo, or were there some pages missing?
It could be, we got some extra copies later on, and I, I know in the PAD book, I found just this afternoon some missing pages as well, so. And I had some, some PAD that was the entire book, and some that were missing, so we got a couple of different printings, so it could just be that, that that's it, but we'll make sure before it goes to council, all the copies have all the pages.
Any other comments? Commissioner Williams? Commissioner DeBrocker? Commissioner Bay?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Craver, and who will be speaking for the applicant? Mr. Jones. Do, for the record, state your new, your name and your new firm, please.
Thanks, appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dustin Jones with the firm of Tiffany &amp; Bosco. Soon to have an office in the West Valley. No more commuting downtown. Appreciate your time this evening and the questions that have, that have already arisen with respect to our application. Many of your questions that you've asked are right on point and will be addressed this evening. We are in general agreement with staff and their stipulations and the questions that they have raised, and the, and the items that they've requested be worked out and finalized in detail before this case goes to the city council. As you can appreciate, we were, we were back here, we were here back in September on our case, working on just the Wood Corporate Campus project, and while we were working on that case, also we're working on trying to secure the baseball MOU, memorandum of understanding. And shortly after, we received the approval here at the planning and zoning commission on Wood Corporate Campus, the baseball looked very, very viable, and at the request of the staff and this commission, we are back here this evening to address the baseball issue, more specifically, the application you have before you, obviously has been contemplated to incorporate baseball and the ballpark village on the site. With me this evening, I have John Ruggieri, who is the president of Rose Properties Management, and he has been very, very involved in this project for about a year, working for a year just on the baseball element and attracting the teams to this site, and is very, very aware of all the issues that you've raised this evening. He's been working very, very closely with the deputy city manager, Brian Dahlke, on all these details, and I understand that staff meets every week on this project, so some of these issues that you've raised, John will be able to speak to tonight as well. Terry Matula is also here with us this evening, he's also with Rose Properties, and we have members of the family who are with us, the Wood family. We have both Ken and Pug who are here this evening. No Margaret. No Margaret tonight. That's a first. Always like to see her shining smiley face. And then we have one of the sons as well, Steve, who's with us this evening, and we appreciate them coming out here to talk about their project, talk about their, the vision that they have for this and share on this site. As staff has gone through in great detail, they've talked about many of these, these slides that I have prepared for you this evening, I won't spend a whole lot of detail, but what I really want to focus on is the philosophy behind the project, and what we're really trying to accomplish here with our vision of the north parcel on the north side and the south to the south. As you can see in the philosophy of the site, what we were trying to accomplish here on the north parcel is have a ballpark village, and I'll speak to that in greater detail. On the south parcel, you can see what we have, we're calling it Wood Corporate Campus on the south side, ballpark village on the north side. And as, as we're going through this process, we are very, very engaged right now in negotiating a development agreement with the city to address many of the concerns you have, and we focus on the ballpark village regulation and the Wood Corporate Campus regulation on the bottoms on the south side. On this site plan here, one of these alternatives that is in the PAD application, you can note that this here in corporate, or contemplates only one baseball team, which is noted there in the green. If two baseball teams arrive and, to the city, and the, one of the memorandums of understandings that the city has already entered into, contemplates an option to the city, if a second team arrives, then the plan that you have in your PAD application would allow for the development of two practice facilities down on the south property, and then the remaining purple portion would be the Wood Corporate Campus. And obviously, this is still the zoning stage, this is at the greater level, there's bubble diagrams, no site plans are being approved, much of the circulation is being approved, but most of the details about building locations, all of that will be taking place in, in the future as we go through the project. On the north parcel, again, we have the ballpark village, which is about 57 acres. You can see the ballpark noted in the middle, and you can see it is a mixed-use, very intensive urban environment, much like, much, much unseen in the West Valley, and much unseen in the valley altogether. You can see the intensity of the types of uses that are proposed on this site plan. This is a conceptual site plan, but it is included in our presentation to give you a very clear indication of the types of uses that could be adjacent to the ballpark. Again, it's, we keep using the term stadium, it's more than just a stadium, it's better than a stadium, it's a ballpark in the middle of a mixed-use development. You can imagine people coming to events and walking through all of that private property around the ballpark, and being able to sit at restaurants, go to the hotels, go to the other types of hospitality, entertainment venues that will be on the site. It's going to be a very, very active site, and as you can see in this diagram here, this conceptual site plan shows a variety of different types of parking options that could occur on this north parcel. And so although you don't have in your application right now all of the parking that's been approved, the development agreement that we're working on with the city has much of the requirements of, of working out a parking plan for this site, to, to approve and establish a regime by which the various parking stalls that are required just for the ballpark are addressed, and then all the parking requirements for the individual commercial on the site. So this here is just an illustration, again, a concept of what we're looking to do on this site, and what would be, could be the future. And as we talked about six months ago, this project and its adjacency to the city center, if the city center is the heart of the city, this was the lifeblood that was going to bring life into the city center, and we truly mean that, with the ballpark being built in the first phase very, very soon, and the deadlines that have already been imposed by the agreements that the city has entered into, this will be the catalyst for the development of the city center, and all that's going to be going on, it's going, would be truly a distinctive urban place. Here again, illustrating the south property of the south parcel, and here is a concept, again, a conceptual site plan that would show the single practice facility. And one thing I want to note, and I don't know if there's a pointer on this that I can use, but you, but you can note that on the practice facility, there is all, there is parking that's adjacent to the practice facility. So much has been spoken of this evening about parking, that as you can see, south of the practice facilities, there, there's parking, and I believe that's 150 stalls that are required to be adjacent to the, just the practice facility on the south portion, and that may not be clearly noted in the application, the PAD application that you have before you. And this illustration here shows two practice facilities for two different teams, and you can see again, independent practice facilities for the different, different teams with the adjacent parking required for both of those. So again, these are, these are illustrative conceptual site plans to give you an indication of what and how the north parcel and the south parcel could be developed. The design guidelines for the project are pretty comprehensive, and as staff has indicated, there are some things that they would like us to fine-tune before getting to council. We don't have any objection in doing that. We are going to be working with staff very, very closely, continue to work very closely with staff over the next month here as we finalize our development agreement. As you can appreciate, because of the agreements that have already been signed, there is a very, very narrow window of opportunity for us to move forward, to stay on task. I can tell you, I have been burning the midnight oil, working on many of the agreements that are required in order for us to move forward on this project. We will be, based on the comments we've received from staff with respect to the design guidelines and stipulations, we are reviewing those, reviewing the comments, we'll be meeting with staff to, to ascertain exactly what things they want to have revised in the design guidelines. Don't have any objection with that stipulation, but, Mr. Chairman, if you have any specifics that you have concerns about, you've expressed some concerns with the design guidelines, if you can let us know what specific things you would like to have addressed over the next few weeks as we're working with staff to prepare for council, that would be helpful as well. Again, some of the big things that are going on right now, the MLUs that have already been signed since our last meeting back in September before you, the development agreement that's in negotiation, and the substantial changes to our application to contemplate the ballpark village being incorporated on the north parcel. So we hope that we can address all of your concerns. I have another slide that was not included in your application, Eddie, if I can get Elmo. This here is one of the exhibits to the MOU that was approved last month. On this exhibit here, we have to apologize because this is my working copy, and I have my notes all over it, but on this exhibit, you can see the various parking arrangements that are, have already been agreed to and are contemplated in the MOU. This was the MOU that was approved by the city about a month ago. On this exhibit, you can see the first phase of parking that would be required, and we've got this portion already noted on the site there. It would be, and again, don't want to get into all the legal technicalities about easements and whatnot, but you can see the various parking options that are available here. This one's number one, down below here, this will be parking as well, and we've noted the parking that would be permitted on the on-street parking on this road here, goes through the site, and then I've also noted here additional parking. It's- And then I've also noted here additional parking that's down here on the bottom. So, all of this, we've been working on, sitting in meetings for hours. We were at a two and a half hour, three hour meeting with Harvey and, five, five hour meeting with Harvey over, not too long ago, working through many of the questions that you've addressed. All of this needs to be finalized, obviously, before we move forward so that there is a comfort level between the developer and the city, the commission and the council. So, we appreciate the issues being raised and we will take note and keep working. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And John Roggeri with Rose Properties Management would like to address some of the other specific concerns, because again, he has been breathing and living this for quite a few months.
Before, Dustin, before you conclude, can I, are there any specific questions for Mr. Jones's presentation? Because I have one that I would like to ask. Could you put your working diagram back on Elmo, please? On the, on the parcel, the 1.04 acres, the 100-foot right-of-way, that's from, that's Sun MP. Has Sun MP agreed to convey that to the city? Do, you know, I'm just asking, you know, where are we on this?
I haven't had any discussions with Sun MP of staff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, they agreed to a 60-foot right-of-way, and that was stipulated in their zoning case. So, yes, they will, they will dedicate-
Will, will a 60-foot right-of-way give us additional diagonal parking like we're having along, you know, parking, parking exhibit one and parking two?
The answer would be no. Yeah, no. No, it won't.
Okay.
But we have connectivity. That was, if you recall the zoning case, we talked about connectivity and making sure that a road was provided, and that was part of the zoning consideration for Sun MP was that they would dedicate that easement. They didn't have to build the road. The road will be built as part of Wood Corporate Campus ballpark village development. But 60 feet is all that we, at the time that we just got 60 feet, we had, did not have, we didn't know about the concept of having on-street parking on both sides of the street up and down that road. So, if we'd have known that at the time, we would have probably requested additional right-of-way. But Sun MP agreed to that 60 feet reluctantly, but we haven't.
I would, I would advise you to figure out an inducement with them to get the extra 40 feet, but it's, but you're telling me it's not going to happen?
They've already, Mr. Chairman, they already have a, a site plan in. If you recall, they've got the zoning approved. I believe they got a preliminary plan, or they, not a plat, but they've got a site plan adjacent to that, in that area, and with a building plan and elevation, and they're in process right now.
Thank you.
We'd have to buy additional property, and we'll be very excited about that.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I have two points. One, I'd like to, I mean, you have a very good point about the paved parking, because I remember the airshow. And my second question, you know, if that, if that stretch between the two properties is a narrower, narrower road, is there proper pedestrian access for the 1,700 feet, third of a mile walk that people are going to have to walk from this parking area to the ballpark?
I don't have an answer. So, Mr. Jones, would you like to answer that, or would you like to let Mr. Roggerio speak?
Commissioner Williams? Yes, within that 60-foot right-of-way, you certainly could provide sidewalks. That's a, that's a normal local street cross-section. The issue would be that there would not be the parking on the street as well.
But, but, I mean, this is, once in a while, you know, after a ballgame, we're going to have more than people just walking down a little sidewalk. You know, we're going to have 10,000 people going down the sidewalk. And don't we need a little more than a sidewalk to accommodate 3,000 or 4,000 people?
I, I would think that part of the whole stadium parking circulation management plan will include funneling people and vehicles in and out of the stadium facilities. That's something that's going to be looked at. It's very possible that one or two-way streets now may become one-way streets for, for certain distances at certain times before and after games. That's something that's all going to be handled as part of a, a management plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones, Mr. Roggerio?
Chairman, members of the commission, thank you very much. John Roggeri, president of Rose Properties Management. It's taken a long time to get back here, and I do appreciate your patience. We have been working diligently over the past year and a half, as you know, to try to bring a ballpark like no other to the city of Goodyear and the community. And we're very proud for bringing a very innovative idea that no one has, else has thought about in the United States. This is cutting-edge, very truly. We keep referring to this as a stadium. We never refer to it as a stadium internally. We refer to it as a ballpark. And the reason why we call it a ballpark goes back to our initial concept that when building community, you start around the common green, and then you build out from there. Our concept from the very beginning, and we hold it as I stand here and speak with you today, is that we are really talking about building the common green for the community. And as such, access to the common green is very important and needs to be held and trust. And the way that we have approached this concept is by opening up the stadium and making it a ballpark. In fact, I have said this many times to our people internally, some of our partners, some other groups that are potentially interested in the development. I don't refer to it even as a ballpark. I refer to it as the green that is built to Major League Baseball standards that could be used on 15 or 30 days a year for a singular purpose and a specialized purpose for which the balance of the year, it is open to the community as a whole. And therefore, the design and the approach and the integration of that park into the balance of the development becomes critical on how the public perceives accessibility into it. And so, we are going through, we have gone through, and we are continuing to go through a design process which places the importance on that integration of the public in the private realms. I want to compliment staff because they've been working alongside with us during this entire process. This is not an easy process, because we are being very, very innovative here. And so, we have worked on a lot of different concepts, and you've, you've posed some questions. So, I'll try to answer your questions very directly and then be available for, for additional questions. I first like to address the issue of design guidelines. Actually, before I start with design guidelines, let me tell you where I think we are at in the process. Staff and Mr. Jones has indicated that we are on a timeline, and that timeline is very real. The city is under contractual obligations to the Cleveland Indians. We are under contractual obligation to the city, Rose Properties, and the Wood family. We have formed a new group with JMI Sports called Goodyear Baseball LLC to assist the city in overseeing the design and the development of the facilities on behalf of the city to ensure that all of this will be delivered on time for Major League Baseball in two years, 23 months from now. And actually, for the fields prior to that, for the practice fields prior to that. It's a gargantuan task, and we are trying to hit on all 24 cylinders at one time right now. Where we are in the process is that I believe that we have been very successful in working with staff through some very, very complicated issues that helps to define what the footprint of the ballpark is. Now, why is it that, why is that important, and why did I describe it that way? It's because of the deadline. And we have to describe legally and convey that footprint and the access to that, the access between the practice fields and the ballpark in a very timely manner in order to meet all of our obligations. And we are partners in this, true sense of partners. And so, we have, for your benefit, for council's benefit, staff, and also for us, have gone to an unusual length to describe what the uses are and the dimensioning of those uses around the ballpark proper so that we would have enough confidence in describing the actual location of the ballpark and therefore the conveyance. When we convey, we are actually, to be quite frank with you, we are in engineering design on utilities, because we have to meet the deadline. We have to take the, we, we have to go to the extraordinary lengths to meet the obligations. And so, the precise location is very important. And so, the, the uses, even though they are conceptual, in our mind, we had to go through and make certain assumptions on what potential uses could be there. Now, the way that we did that, first off, I want to say that the uses that we show on the plan are conceptual. They are our best guess at this moment in time. They, they may not represent the final end product, because we are, are market-driven. We are not going to build something on speculation and have, and have the people come to it. We have to be fiscally and financially prudent, just as everybody else. So, what we have done, the way that we have tried to work through that process, is we hired, in my opinion, the best urban design and architectural firm in the world in R T K L. They have done many of these over the last 40 years. In fact, staff and I and a few people went out to Texas a couple of weeks ago and walked through one of their projects, Legacy Town Center, and we were all very impressed with it. These folks know how to do things. And so, we brought them on board because they have that kind of wisdom. And so, with that, what we have tried to do with the uses is describe for you a scenario that will eventually develop on the site when it is fully expressed as an urban village. We have to go through phases to get there. Now, we have the situation where we need to make, we need to make a commitment on the ballpark, and we know that we have a 3,000 stall, parking stall requirement for the ballpark. The S T A stipulated that, 1,000 of which is to be paved, 2,000 of which can be rocked or grassed. That comes right out of funding, right out of the S T A. And so, we are under contractual obligation in our memorandum of understanding between the city and Rose Properties to provide just that. We have tried to express that in a parking diagram that you see up on the, call this Elmo?
Yeah.
Okay. I am, I'm going to try to give you a different one that I think is, is, is a-
Do you want diagram 8.6?
I want that, thank you.
Eddie, could you bring-
Actually, I am going to go to-
It's coming up. I think it's coming up.
Who's going to go to this one? Wow. That's, that's good, I think. Okay, great. Thank you, Dustin. Hand that back to you that way you won't give away any trade secrets. The diagram that you see up there now describes, in essence, the parking, in red, the parking facilities and the areas that will be dedicated over to the ballpark. You'll note that in this location, we have, we have amended the original concept so that we could include more prop, more parking in proximity to the, to the, to the ballpark. We did not change the size and the location of the 22 plus or minus acres down here in green, okay? We just left that as it is. We are going to convey over to the city, hopefully very soon, all of that property plus this purple to make this work. This piece will be conveyed, will be conveyed for the additional 2,000 stalls. Actually, what you see on this diagram between the green, the roadway going up, exclusive of the Sun MP parcel, the purple up here, this lot and these, is 3,600 stalls, plus or minus, 3,650 stalls. The reason why we have located the parking where we have is because as we've gone around, my partner Eric and I, Eric Judson and I from JMI Sports, and I have toured virtually all of the minor league stadiums around the United States, I'm sorry, the major league spring training stadiums around the United States. What we noticed is people like to go to practice. They like to view practice, okay? They don't just go for the game, they make a day out of it. They, it's the one place that you can go to watch baseball players, Major League Baseball players from sunrise to sunset. You know, you don't get that during game day out at, you know, Chase Field. You get them for an hour and 30 minutes and that's it, or two hours and 30 minutes. Over here, it becomes an experience. So, our theory behind the placement of the parking is to centrally locate the majority of the parking so that people can go to the practice facilities, park once, go to the practice facilities, and walk over to the game. Now, we could move that, and I'm perfectly fine with moving it, to be honest with you. I can move it right next to the stadium. I can move it north of Goodyear Boulevard to get it more proximate. But I'm going to ask you, when somebody gets off over there and they want to go to the practice facilities, they're walking over a mile. So, I'm going to leave it up to you. I really, it doesn't matter, because in essence, it's temporary parking. Hopefully, within the next six months, I'll be able to bring back to you in more definitive detail and to counsel what our Phase 1 plans are. So, what I want to try to avoid is putting the parking in a location, making the investment of several million dollars, only to move it six months after we build it. So, I'm thinking that this location serves two masters. It serves the convenience of the customer, and it just makes sense from a development standpoint and allocation of resources, okay? Now, so, where we, where we go with that is we are committed to providing 3,000 parking stalls under an irrevocable easement in perpetuity to the city of Goodyear for the ballpark and any events associated with it. That means, but we also have in the memorandum of understanding the ability to move that parking. Now, our thought behind that is, we're going to, we've, we've brought onboard Walker Parking. Walker Parking is the preeminent parking analyst in the United States. They are the folks that wrote the shared parking manual and then updated it for the Urban Land Institute. They are consultants to the cities of Scottsdale, Tempe, and Phoenix, and help those three cities write their shared parking coordinates. This is a mathematical model. And the mathematical model is, when you, and the concept is, if you have a single use and you have the prescribed parking, you get X amount of parking. If you have another use right next to it, you get X amount of parking. But under shared parking, when you put those together, something very interesting happens. You get daytime use and you get evening use potentially. You get weekend, weekday. You get holidays, non-holidays. All of these modal splits go into this mathematical model, okay? Now, the way they build the model is they look at the various uses and the intensity of the uses, and they, they put input in, X amount of square foot for X amount of use, and they compare it to what's out there. And every time you put an input in, it gives you a different number out. And every time you put an input in, it gives you a different number out. And so it is, it is a, it is a model that informs us what the proper ratio is. Typically, you'll see twenty to thirty percent parking savings through a shared parking model as the benefits of mixed use, okay? What we've found in running the preliminary numbers based upon our preliminary land uses and intensities, we found a twenty-seven percent savings. That resulted in approximately sixty-six hundred stalls, including the residential. After you take the residential out, because that has to be dedicated, now you have the real net number that is viewed in terms of when people use it, how they use the facilities based upon the land uses that we have, okay? Um, because we don't know exactly how much land use is going in there, because really what we're setting here is a maximum level, okay? Um, what we're suggesting to staff is that we have a proof of parking. So every time we come in with a final site plan for each piece of our project, we not only bring in the site plan and we review it that way, but we review the parking ord, we review the parking requirements and we plug it into the model. So that way, that is a way of, of us giving you the surety that we're going to give you adequate parking, and quite frankly, we need adequate parking too, because if we don't have adequate parking, I can't lease it and nobody's going to come there. So it benefits us to have the right parking there as well. So I wanted to take a little bit of time to go through that with you. What we're planning on doing is having, uh, Walker Parker come in to meet with staff, uh, hopefully next week, to continuously go through and understand this methodology. It's not an easy concept, we haven't seen it here yet in Goodyear, most cities in the United States have not seen this yet, but it is proven historically, and these guys, quite frankly, are the best at it. And that's why we've hired them, is to bring them onboard, because they make all of us smarter, makes our decision-making more informed. So, um, that is how I would explain the location of the parking and the amount of the parking that we have. So, it, it is moving, uh, I wish I could give you, here it is and this is what it's going to be, I can't. I could say, this is a work in progress, we're setting the parameters, and here's the methodology that we're using. Um, regarding, uh, the dimensions of the Sun MP right-of-way going through there, our dimensions on our roads, our north-south collector road allows us to do angle parking. Now, when we went through and did our, when Wilson did our parking study, uh, I'm sorry, our traffic study, the majority of all the, the road, the majority of all traffic north-south is going up and down Australia and up and down Bullard. The north-south collector that we have in there is really a very localized street. It is, it is a way of getting people from point A to point B, internal to the site, very little movement going off-site, and I'll, I'll give you the study to show that. Uh, and therefore deserving of putting angle parking on it, because the more parking we could put right there, right up against the practice fields, the more opportunity there is for the average resident of Goodyear to pull up with their kids and just go out and play ball on those, when the city has access to it, because it's city property, it's a city park, you're going to have right of use under your use agreement with the, with the Indians. So we're trying to set it up as convenient as possible for all the users of that park, not just people from Scottsdale that come in to watch a game, but for your neighbors as well, okay? So that's one rationale for doing that. When we get up into the Sun MP property, that, uh, that is a sixty-foot right-of-way, um, that is, that was negotiated between the city of Goodyear and that property owner, we didn't have, uh, any opportunity to influence that. And so we're fortunate and we're thankful that we have that right of access. Uh, if you're able to negotiate additional parking in there, that would be wonderful. If you can't, we do have sidewalks in there, because we have enough right-of-way to have sidewalks in there. During game days or event days, uh, because of the nature of that north-south road, I would recommend a parking management plan that closes that road down to through traffic, allows people to move in there safely, even on the street. These things are done all the time in high-volume event situations, it's really a management issue more than a design issue, is what we've learned. Uh, our, my partner, uh, Eric Judson with JMI did it with Petco Park, where certain streets in downtown are closed, other streets are, are directionally, you know, they go one way one, at one hour, and they go another way at another hour to get people in and out. We're going to do the same thing here, we just have to get to that point as part of the management plan. And we'll help the city to understand that, uh, you know, with some real-life examples out there. Regarding, uh, the distance, um, yeah, it is seventeen hundred feet, uh, it's, uh, it's a little bit more than twelve hundred and fifty feet, I mean, if you want us to put it all within twelve fifty, let me know, we'll change the diagram. But people are going to be walking longer the other way, is our experience. So I just, I caution you that good intentions may, may come back and hurt us. Um, uh, the next thing is, uh, phasing, somebody asked about phasing, I wish we had, uh, greater detail on phasing. Uh, we do have a phasing diagram, uh, the phasing diagram shows everything that is all of the investment that's going to go in to get the ballpark built and the practice facilities built. I cannot give you, uh, that this building is going to build, be built by this date and that building by another date. I, I, I don't have that. All I know is that we are improving, we are improving all of the roadways around the north fifty-seven acres, we are improving Bullard, we are improving the north-south collector, we are improving Australia. There's a lot of, uh, investment that's going into infrastructure to get everything prepared. Uh, regarding that, about obligations, I don't think people realize that the Wood family has contributed approximately fourteen million dollars in the land value alone to the city of Goodyear to make the ballpark work. I don't know if people realize that Wood Family has contributed an additional five million dollars to the construction of the ballpark. And I don't think that people realize that the Wood Family is making a nineteen million dollar, an estimated nineteen million dollar investment in infrastructure costs, to throw the first pitch. I'd say that's one hell of an obligation that we've met. We will go to parking structures, there was a question about why not go to parking structures, we certainly will, it's just a matter of phasing before we were able to get there. And, um, and, uh, regarding the design guidelines, the design guides, the, the design guidelines that we submitted, um, we think are robust enough and appropriate enough for the stage that we're in, because quite frankly, um, we're at, we're at a conceptual master plan level stage. When we come back in through site plan, we're going to be beefing those up, uh, and, you know, until we know really what those uses are, we can't really describe those adequately at this point. Other than that, I think that, uh, I hope that I, I answered all of your questions. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm really, really very proud of, of what we've been able to accomplish. I'm very grateful to staff and frankly, to the city of Goodyear. This is a visionary plan, this is a visionary partnership, it's not been done before, and quite frankly, it's a learning experience, and we're learning every single day, every single meeting, and, you know, we're still talking with each other, so that's a good sign. And, um, uh, we really look forward to, uh, to moving forward and making it happen. And, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Loritano?
Uh, I was the one with the parking structures, and my concern on that was when I saw the hotel there and the residential, if you'd have enough as it phased in, but it sounds like that's something you're considering for the future, so you did answer my question there.
Good, I'm, I'm glad that I did, and yes, we will phase the parking in when those facilities come in.
And then the other concern I had was originally when it said it wasn't going to be, um, I thought of the air, the airshow too as well, when I was there at the Goodyear Airport, because people were parking on the sandy dirt, but it sounds like it's either going to be grass or that, um, aggregate rock, correct? It's not just going to be straight dirt, it's going to be filled with something.
I, I don't think it's going to be straight dirt, I don't think that we've-
Yeah, that was a nightmare.
I don't think we've actually addressed what that is, but I think that, uh, per, that, the design of the facilities and the materials are going to be reviewed by the architect, by the STA's architect, HOK, the city's architect, will be making recommendations, we're going to have to pass that all through STA. Uh, I believe they have those standards, uh, our, uh, our team on Goodyear Ballpark is, is working with them, and they're probably going to tell us what that's going to be.
And then my only other comment was, I, I like the whole, the whole package you've put together with the residential and all the, the business and everything together, and, and I'm glad you're, you're going to work with the city on the parking, because my concern was you'd have overflow into the residential neighborhoods across the street, and we've got people trying to cross Australia, which will be a six-lane road then, so I'm glad you're willing to work with them on their stipulation.
If, if, if we are that successful, then we'll, uh, clear some more land for parking, because we don't want that either, you know? We should be so successful.
Thank you very much for the, um, presentation about, uh, I would say dedication versus mixed use in the developer agreements, and there's obviously, clearly, for me personally, a lot of agreements and legalese going on that, uh, really doesn't allow for me to clearly understand, uh, why things are done the way they are. So, I guess the question that I have that would help me a lot is, uh, you talked a little bit about dedication, and you, and you talked about these particular parcels, uh, would be dedicated to the city for, uh, parking use and rights of way and those types of things. And then your exhibit, however, shows, you know, all of these, uh, mixed uses with structures and, and, and my assumption is, is that those are additional parking facilities in there that are not part of the count that you're providing for it. And so could you clarify that for me a little bit? Is that a, not clear?
Um, I'll see if I, if I understand your question.
An exhibit would probably help. Uh, you had the one exhibit that showed the ballpark, uh, and, and there, within there was mixed uses, you had, yes, yes, that's funny, sorry. I've got it here too, I just didn't look at it. So, so when you look at the, uh, mixed-use structures that are around the facility itself, uh, I'm looking at these little gray areas with the lines in them, and, and am I to assume those are parking structures, uh, facilities for those structures within and around the ballpark?
At, at, uh, the best way that I can answer that question is, at full buildout, those are the anticipated parking structures, and they are sized accordingly to be able to handle all of the commercial development, as well as the parking for the ballpark, all three thousand stalls.
And those stalls are not included in your count in the table? Is that correct, or am I-
Those stalls are included in that count in the table.
Okay.
Okay. Those, the, the two parking structures at the bottom end of the site, inside of the semi-circular building configurations there are dedicated parking-
Okay.
-for residential.
Okay. But the remaining structures are components of the mixed-use development?
That is correct.
And, and, and that is the, is that the question that's before us, that is really, when will those come in and, and would that then provide the proximity that apparently appears to be the issue?
I believe so. I believe that at full buildout, that will include all the required three thousand stalls for game day.
Okay.
Uh, it would be within those structures, all within the fifty-seven acres. At that point, it becomes a programming and a management issue on the timing of the games and the timing of the retailing and the, uh, and the office and the hotel and convention center activities. And what creates the efficiencies in the parking model is the management of the programs.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, so then, that helps me immensely, because there's dedicated parking that you will, um, give to the city, and then there's these additional parking stalls that are part of the development, but there's no timeline specifically for when those will occur?
Those will occur when we develop per the proof of parking process that will go through.
Okay. Okay, so then, the other part, and this is kind of a catch-22 for me, obviously, city council has some understanding of the MOU and your development agreement, and I heard you mentioned something about, uh, parking structures could be moved as part of the agreement, and so it sounds like it's not really cut in stone where everything is at, it's sort of, uh, flexible based on how the development proceeds. So if, if that is indeed the case, then, uh, the issues that we're talking about here today, beyond what's dedicated, but what possibly may occur based on the development may change, is that correct?
The, the physical plan may change, the amount of parking may change, the amount of gross square footage and uses may change, may change. What does not change is the commitment of three thousand stalls for, for city use during events, which is prescribed in the MOU.
And the placement of those stalls will be within the same specified area?
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're in this plan right now.
I just want to make sure I understand that clearly.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. You're welcome, thank you for your questions.
Okay.
Mr. Williams?
Well, I have a, I have a comment. You know, it's a tough decision, isn't it? And, and you're, you're right, a lot of people come to spring training, go to the practice fields too, I know that. Uh, and, uh, you know, I guess I would like to say, one, I appreciate all your efforts and all your, the innovations that you're including, uh, and I appreciate all your hours, uh, and I appreciate the contributions of the Wood Family, I mean, that's, that's fabulous. And, you know, I'm, I'm really looking forward to this, uh, you know, hopefully, this will become one of the crown jewels of the city of Goodyear, uh, and unfortunately, we only have one chance and not a lot of time to get it right, so, you know, I wish you well.
No, I look, I look at it, fortunately, we have the team and the time enough to do it right, but thank you very much, I really appreciate your support on that, and your acknowledgement.
Any other comments, questions from Mr. Adrian?
So, so one last, one last point of clarification, sorry.
Sure.
So when we, when we speak, uh, stipulation twenty seven, uh, are, are you in favor-
I, I, I need a reference to stipulation twenty seven.
Okay, this, I thought this is what we were, this was the, uh, the proposed parking plans?
Yes.
Uh, based on staff's concerns, uh, they wanted to assure that these were addressed and then thus placed within, uh, our documents so that they would get approved or disapproved based on, uh, the planning commission's pleasure. So I guess the question I have is, uh, are there objections on stipulation twenty seven?
Well, I, I'd be happy to continue to work with staff and with council in, in, in addressing these issues, we understand that it's a complex model and a complex issue, um, and we'd be happy to continue to work with you.
Okay, that's good enough.
Mr. Black?
Um, and this may be more of a question for staff, I mean, in light of, of your suggestion or, or your position that, that the reason that the two thousand parking spaces are centrally located in order to provide, you know, access or convenience to the parking, or to the, uh, practice facility, I mean, where is staff on that rationale? Because it appears twenty seven, stipulation twenty seven A is citing a lack of, of- Because it appears 27, stipulation 27A is citing a lack of, or the apparent lack of convenience and, and seeks clarification from the developer on why they would put that parking at that location. And, and is that, is their rationale to which they stated tonight not sufficient or, or are you seeking something else?
I think one of the primary issues as far as our concern goes is when those additional parking structures and parking spaces are going to be created within that mixed use parcel. As I said, it would be wonderful if this would all happen at once. I, I think that that's a, an unsafe assumption to make. So the plan that they have provided, that 3.8 document, that, that's how the parking's going to be set up initially and, and that proximity issue is of concern to us. Ultimately, it'll be great, but initially, we have concerns.
Right, okay, so, so basically the answer to the question is, is their rationale for putting the 2,000 parking spaces, you know, 1,800 feet, you know, is, that still remains a concern despite their rationale as a convenience for access to the entire parcel or the entire property?
The placement is of concern to us, yes.
Okay.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Okay. John, could you, could, could we zoom out or could we have a, you know, so I, I want to see where the parking is, you know, that is located in the 185 acre campus based on the design. I have some questions, I guess, okay.
Okay, I, I would like to put this up because.
That's fine.
Well, this document is in the PAD.
Right.
This is part of the memorandum of understanding, it's part of the development agreement and it really is an attachment and it is in the PAD.
That's, that's, that's okay, let me, that, that helps me. In the, the 22.10 acre, the green section, over time, there are office buildings being developed there with appropriate parking structures, is that correct?
We, we would hope that we would get that kind of receptivity in the marketplace that we would need to put parking structures in there. It, it could be shorter buildings and it could be surface lots.
Okay. If, if I look back at the North 57, there are, you have, in addition to the hotel and the convention center, there are, it looks like three types of retail villages that, that basically surround the, the circle at, you know, to the south of Home Plate. Is there any reason that you could not put temporary surface parking in those areas where you have it indicated and essentially are plant, you are planning to develop a structure with structured parking in that same area? Is there any reason why at this point in time, we could not put temporary surface parking in those three quadrants that would add, it would, it would, I think it would solve some, some issues of.
Sure.
Mobility and closeness. Does staff have issues with that or can, could staff work that out or is that something that is acceptable?
In, in working out something in closer proximity to?
Well, I'm, I'm looking, if, if you put, if you look at, you know, the, the, if you could put that PAD, that pretty picture up there, there are three parking in the, in the west quadrant, the southwest quadrant and the south quadrant from the circle. There are three parking structures that eventually will be built with retail around them and, you know, we can train our citizens that parking is going to be there and at this point in time, it's surface parking and in the future, it's going to be a parking structure with retail that they can spend their money in. Is, is that?
To me, that makes perfectly good sense. I think that that's part, part of the things that we have to do is really begin to retrain people the way they think about using space and using, using facilities. Park once, use multiple things.
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking that we have all this dirt around the stadium, we're going to have this beautiful stadium and people are going to say, why am I parking, you know, a half a mile away when I could be parking on this dirt? And if we put some gravel down on it so it's, so it doesn't create dust, that, that's going to solve a lot of issues that I think staff has and the commission has and maybe council will eventually have. And I don't think it's going to cost you that much money.
And, and actually what I said before is that I'm perfectly fine with moving it around. Our thought is that this is more centrally located if your preference is to move it up into the North 57.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying move the, you know, there's 2,000 spots there and, you know, if, if you look at the surface parking, I think you're going to, you know, maybe get, you know, 350 spots in a quadrant if, if I'm, you know, eyeballing it correctly or maybe 200 spots in a quadrant, but that's 600 closer spots to the stadium than, you know, and, and that's 18, you know, 1,800 people that are going to be walking less to go to the ballgame. Because that's what they're going to do the first, the first two or three years, all they're doing is going to go walk to the ballgame and go to practice. I mean, I wish there was something to, to take their money so we get the sales tax, but.
And to be able to, right. I don't have a problem if we were to locate the first set of non-paved gravel spots along Estrella up in the North 57.
Okay.
Okay. And then try to pick up the majority of the rest of the hard surface ones along the roadways where we have angled in parking. That seems to make sense and, you know, if, if three months from now, our phase one starts with that retail along there.
God bless you, build this.
Fantastic, let's build it and then we'll find another place on the 57 for parking. That, that's the beauty of the MOU, it gives us some flexibility to move things around organically on the site. I wanted to compliment your, your, you know, the attorney, Mr. Ruby, that city used because it was, the document is really quite elegant and allow, it protects both parties at the same time. You know, we could, we could shift to the north of Goodyear Boulevard. The one area that we really have to be very, very cautious is right around the ballpark because we're going to be working in there and we're probably going to be building in there right away. So I, I want to, I want that, to me, that's sort of like the hands-off zone. We got to be really careful about that area, okay? But around the perimeter, I'm game.
Mr. Craver, are you?
We're, we're chatting.
We're chatting.
Forgive me.
Mr. Roderick said he would be willing to move some of the surf, unpaved or the gravel temporary parking into the North 57 so that not all 2,000 spots are in the, in the green zone. Would that solve some of our issues of having, you know, basic, because, because eventually there'll be parking structures in that same spot or however it develops, but, but would that solve the initial first three years of development of the, of the problem of the parking is, is too far away for events that are going to take place?
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Can you work a compromise out? Yes, sir.
Conceptually, it, it has a lot of merit and conceptually, we're okay with it, it just that the deep, the devil's in the details and we need to think about what that's going to look like and how long it's going to be there and, is this, and let me also ask clarify, are you asking that this be part of the 3,000 spaces that are dedicated for the stadium or are you talking about separate from that? Is infine parking?
No, I'm talking about that's the three, that's part of the 3,000, I mean.
Well, we need to work, we need to work through the attorney for the, our attorney on that and some other, there's some other agreements in place, so we'd like to not necessarily commit to that at this point. We'll look, we'll take a look at it if that's his time.
It's, it sounds like that they already have an MOU that allows them to be flexible in terms of moving things around.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my concern is, is we're, we've asked for a stipulation that provides some assurances that we get what we need over a period of time. They seem to be all right with, and accepting that. We also have in fact, an MOU that has already been signed apparently, that, that, that gives them some latitude that sounds to me like we really don't have a lot of, lot of control over, but it, it appears as though we, we do have some, some synergy here where collectively, working together, you guys can, can work these things out without really having to worry about a lot of litigation or, or documentation in terms of, well, amendments to agreements and MOUs and that sort of thing. I guess my concern is that we, we have several documents that sort of step on one another, sounds like to me, so, and so of, for example, between the MOU and the developer agreement, which one has precedence in terms of how, how this even gets handled?
Development agreement.
The development agreement takes precedence over the MOU. Okay, so within the development agreement, the exhibit that's currently showing, is that in the agreement or the MOU?
First of all, there isn't a development agreement yet.
There isn't?
We're still working on that. That hasn't been done. But if you, if the commission wants to give me general direction and if you want to move some of the parking closer to the stadium, then, then we can, we'll take that and, and work with that and just generally or conceptually and then try to make that work.
Okay.
Rather than trying to get into the details.
Yeah, okay.
My, my concern is that if stipulation 27 goes to council the way it's written tonight, it, I would be speaking against it and I think many of our council members would just have epiplexy.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I, directly the first part of that, it says prior to council consideration.
I understand.
We want things cleared up, we're not going to take it to council unless these issues are addressed. And it's not just the location of the parking, we have problems with the parking analysis, there's some, there's some actual, there's some mistakes, there needs to be some clarifications in the document. The document is what we're, the PAD document is what we're focused on, we're not focused on so much the MOU or development agreement. And also the double counting of parking and, and having the city put in a position where we have to coordinate events at the, at the ballpark village or stadium and the convention center, that's part of the analysis. I, I'm not sure how that's going to work. So we've got some, we've got some concerns and they're, they're addressed here and what we're asking the developer to do is address those prior to going to council, not at, not, not taking this to council in its present form. So if the, if the commission wants us to work on it some more, then I guess we need to know.
I don't think the commission wants to delay this because this is an exciting project, but the commission wants some assurances from the developer, his representatives and staff that this problem is going to be solved before it gets to council. Because if it isn't, we'll, I can come, I, I'm here, I sit there and I will make sure that some of my other commissioners come up and we will start saying, you promised to do this and you didn't do this. And that's the first, and this will be the first time that we have to say that.
Pardon me, what did I not do?
You haven't done anything yet. We're just, we just want to make sure.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
That's fine. No, we just want to make sure.
Actually, I've done a lot, you just don't know about it.
You haven't done anything negative yet, okay? We just want to make sure that this gets worked out because when I read this stipulation, I have some, I, I have some serious issues and I presented them and I think so many of my commissioners had the same issues. This is a final PAD. It gives you many rights. It gives you also many obligations. The design guidelines are also part of that. As the market changes, you're going to come and ask us to do different things because of the, of the conditions of the market and I am a very market-driven person and I agree with that. But I think you need to be able to come back to us and say, the market has changed, we need to do this and, and then let us make sure that we think you're doing the correct thing.
Well, I appreciate that and I'm here to make friends, not enemies and I, I, I hope that I don't do things that are going to create problems in the future. It's not my intention. To be quite frank, I'm a bit confused.
We're, you're ahead.
I'm.
I would, I would, you're ahead, you're winning. I'll stop. Okay. Unless, unless my fellow commissioners have any other points or questions?
I think what you're telling him is just say yes, we will work with staff to, to figure out. Sit down.
I, I've been told that get out of Dodge when you get a chance and maybe I should take your advice on that. Could you, could you repeat for me what the, what you want so that I could clearly understand on the parking specifically? Because I, I didn't quite hear an, an agreement or an acceptance of that.
I would like some type of surface parking, part of the 2,000 spots in those general areas or if you want to put it north of Goodyear, what is this, Goodyear Boulevard in that general area for a while, that would be great.
It's temporary.
It's temporary, but I think it needs to be there for the first, I mean, if you go up to, if you go up to the Surprise Stadium, you know, that's a four-year-old stadium and, you know, and if you go to Peoria, that's a 10-year-old stadium. If you go to Scottsdale, that's a, probably a 25-year-old stadium. Well, Scottsdale looks a lot different than Peoria and Surprise do, but Peoria is starting to look a lot more interesting than it did five years ago. And I, and we anticipate your stadium five, five, seven years from now is going to be a lot more interesting and the Wood corporate campus and the baseball village is going to be a lot more interesting than when it opens up in 2009. But I think we need to address 2009. I don't care where you put them, John, just I think you need, you know, a couple of hundred, I think you need 500 to 600 spots closer to the ballpark at least when we start.
And I'm fine with that. This, this makes sense, I'm not quite, I, I would agree with this area in here, we can do that, we can do this. I'm not quite sure about that, if that's the best location, but you know, we'll, we'll try to get as many up there as possible.
I'm not the parking expert, I'm expert at a lot of things, but that's.
Do we, do we have staff's concurrence on that?
Staff, can we work with this?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we'll work with this. Conceptually, it makes some sense and we'll work with it.
Any other issues?
We do have, we do want to offer.
A couple revisions to address stipulation number one and, and a new stipulation as well. Could I read those into the record, sir?
Sure, yes ma'am, go ahead, please.
On, on number one, see if this does it, this, the final planned area development shall comply with the PAD zoning district criteria, City of Goodyear Engineering Design Standards for Public Works Construction and with Maricopa Association of Government Standard for Public Works Construction, except as modified by the city engineer or as modified by the approved final PAD.
Perfect, cool.
Then if I put an omission of mine on number 22, on page four of the staff report, just almost towards the end there where it says city center specific area, it should say specific area plan. And then we have a new stipulation. And then we have a new stipulation, which would be, with your approval, stipulation thirty, "Prior to approval of each privately-owned commercial, industrial, or residential site plan, or an amendment to an approved site plan, the developer and/or owner shall demonstrate compliance with the city's prevailing parking requirements, or demonstrate to the satisfaction of the community development director or his designee, a proof of parking for each site through an amendment, through, yeah, through an amendment to an approved shared parking analysis." The assumption being that in our dealings here prior to council, we're gonna come to an agreement on a shared parking analysis that will eventually get approved as part of the final PAD. Then each time they come in with a site plan, they will demonstrate we're still needing that analysis.
It's fine with me.
Where they comply with parting standards.
Does the applicant have issues? They're discussing it now.
I'm in.
Um, so, does that, does that, uh, mitigate twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven's gonna be... Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, with respect to the new stipulation, stipulation thirty, with respect to the parking, John and I have been discussing it. Stipulation twenty-seven requires us to work everything out before we get to council. So, we are already in the process, as John has indicated, bringing the consultant to the city to meet with staff to address that issue.
Uh, stipulation twenty-seven talks about parking now for the next three years. We're talking about the life of this agreement when you, we're hoping that two years from now, you're gonna come to us and say, "We wanna build this three-story retail complex, and we're gonna need to build this parking structure, and we wanna have assurance that you're gonna be still continuing with the parking analysis." And stipulation twenty-seven, at this point, does not cover that.
I, I, I guess I need some clarification, 'cause I think that it does. I think that it says on twenty-seven E, where it refers to a shared parking analysis, and G, further analysis of shared parking mode, that we have to go through that process again. That, to me, means for the, for the ultimate solution, as well as all the interim steps. Maybe I'm misunderstanding twenty-seven.
Okay, well, okay, here, here's, here's my take on this. Twenty-seven is really a stip, is not a stipulation as such, it just has a list of concerns, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't really say, "You're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that." And what stipulation thirty says, where you're gonna work out twenty-seven for the next three years of parking. And what stipulation thirty says is, when you're gonna develop, the next time you're gonna develop a building, you're gonna come in and say, you know, redo the parking analysis. Is that the way I'm listening to it, Karen?
Or, or even, even shorter, I think, than that. Twenty-seven is gonna get us to where we are agreed upon a shared parking analysis. That, that's what those...
It's fine.
Those issues are aiming to do.
Clarify.
And each time they come in with a section of their private development, we wanna make sure we're still adhering to that approved shared parking analysis. And as you have stated yourselves, you will provide us with this proof of parking, and that's...
Is that okay? We'll be done.
I think that part of it, I think that part of it makes sense because we agree that if we can agree upon the model, then what we do is, we provide you with the proof of parking at site plan review. I think that we're in agreement on that. Is that where you're...
Yep.
Why don't we just say it that way? That's very clear.
Okay, 'cause you're gonna reword twenty-seven anyway before it gets to council, so, as long as that agreement is working...
Twenty-seven, Mr. Chairman, twenty-seven deals with, um, the document, the document needs some work. So what we're asking them to do is to clarify things in this document, and these are the items that need to be clarified in the document before it goes to council. Now, the other item, the other stip, the other stipulation deals with, okay, we have a, we have an approved document, council approves the document, we have a shared parking analysis that we agree on, it's in here. And so, you know, years go by, it's not gonna happen, it's gonna happen over a multi-year period of time. We'll get site plans in, and John Ruggiero himself said, "Well, the uses are just conceptual, they may change. We don't know what they'll be." So each use that comes in, the parking is different. So this is based on a set of assumptions on certain uses, so those uses will change, so the parking will change over time. So we need to change the, we may need to change the parking requirement. So what we're saying is, is as he brings in a site plan, we will evaluate that according to the approved parking analysis and ask him to demonstrate, uh, whether he has proof of parking, and if he doesn't, um, this is, I have no trigger to require those structures. I have no tr, uh, trigger if we don't put this in the, in the, as a stipulation.
Absolutely, hundred percent. That makes sense, and I'm, I agree.
So I'm, so I'm trying to paint that picture here.
That makes perfectly good sense.
I will, I will defer to staff and the lawyers to get this worked out.
You read the stipulation you read one more time.
It's all a feeling, that's why.
That's the way you said it. Could you just repeat that?
"Prior to approval of each privately-owned commercial, industrial, or residential site plan, or an amendment to an approved site plan, the developer and/or owner shall demonstrate compliance with the city's prevailing parking requirements, or demonstrate to the satisfaction of the community development director or his designee, a proof of parking for each site through an amendment to the approved shared parking analysis." So, the assumption is, you have an approved one, each time you're gonna come in and demonstrate compliance with the approved.
I, I, I understand it. The only phrase in there that, that confuses or concerns me is the city's parking requirements because under the shared parking analysis, what we're doing is, we're in effect writing a new parking requirement. So, we either agree upon the shared parking, or we don't. I, I, I'm concerned that there's a back door in there, and I want to agree. I need the assurance that we're gonna move ahead with a shared parking analysis or model, and we'll work with staff and council before it gets to council to make sure that that works.
Although, wouldn't, wouldn't the prevailing parking requirement, isn't, wouldn't that be whatever agreement that you come up with?
Well, what, what...
Nope.
What is the current parking requirement that we have that addresses mixed use? Do you have one?
I, the concern, well, there's a couple of issues. In the, in the shared parking analysis they provided, they exclude the residential. We do not wanna, I, I would assume that we don't wanna include the residential properties. They need to have their own parking, so we don't wanna have shared parking on residential properties. Um, that's number one. And then the convention and I think hotel facility, I think that there's an exclusion with, with some of those facilities in the shared parking. Um, and I, so the, so there's two areas there that may need to meet the, the prevailing parking standards, primarily residential. Um, if that's not correct, then...
I, I, I agree with you on the...
Do you have an issue with, you know, basically saying that the residential needs to meet the prevailing city parking?
No, 'cause we agree with that.
Okay.
I disagree with the hotel convention center because...
It's part of the plan.
That's a, that's a huge parking reservoir that's only being used at certain times.
I, I, I would encourage staff to compromise, take the residential standards, and we'll compromise on the hotel convention center because that's so far down the pike. I might be mayor by then. No way. Not even close. Any, any commissioners have any issues they wanna, any topics they would like to bring up? Is staff okay with where we are?
We can take out... So we'll take out residential? Is that what you're saying?
Residential will remain under the city guidelines. Everything else, the, everything else will go under the parking agree, the shared parking agreement.
Well, I'm entirely, well, there's some issues in here that still need to be clarified, and I'm, we're still have some concerns about...
I'm, I'm not disagreeing...
Timing of, um, there's an assumption in here that, um, uh, there, uh, there's ballpark, uh, ballparks going on, there's an event at the ballpark, and there won't be an event at the hotel, that, that the city or somebody's gonna have to coordinate that and make sure that those two, two things do not have, happen concurrently because there won't be enough parking for that. And we, we're really concerned about having to deal with that, with that, we have no control over those two, um, at least the hotel having an event at the same time the ballpark's having an event. This document actually says that that won't happen, and we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen. And I, I can't give that assurance, so that, that's a concern. Um, and I don't think the city wants to be in that position to have to, nor can we dictate that to a private entity. So, that's one issue that we, we need to have clarified.
John, how, assuming you develop a hotel in the near future, how, how will the five, the three thousand parking spots the city has dedicated to the stadium, how will they be assured? Who will, who will manage the parking?
Once again, I referred back to the memorandum of understanding and what's going into the Development Agreement of, "We need to provide you with three thousand parking stalls during an event." How that's done is really part of a management plan, which is a result of the mix of uses when they occur. The city gets three thousand parking stalls during an event.
That's fine. And that's, that's correct.
Is that...
That's correct.
Okay.
It's very complicated, I'm, I'm sorry.
But I'm, okay, I mean, if there's a convention at the hotel and there's a ballgame that afternoon, the city still gets three thousand parking spots for the ballpark, and somebody has to figure out how it's gonna happen. And probably that's the police chief.
There's just some, there's, the concern is some overlap issues, the, and, and they have designated three thousand spaces. It's a, and as John has indicated, it's a management issue, it's gonna require some parking management. We just want some of these things clarified in, in the document before it goes to council. That's all we're saying, and then we've agreed to the stip, I think we're, I think we're in agreement with the stipulation. We'll make the, the modification that John had indicated.
Anything else?
That's the beauty of the, the language of the MOU. You get three thousand stalls. Plain and simple.
Plain and simple. Okay, um, I guess I, John, I wanna, one more thing. I wanna get you up on record at this meeting saying that if design standards change over the life of this agreement, that we will come back with new and better design guidelines. Do I have that assurance?
I will tell you that we will review the design guidelines with you and give you an opportunity.
Thank you.
I can't tell you if they're gonna be better or worse. That's a qualitative statement.
I can't, I can't either.
Okay.
If, uh, no one has any more comments, I am going to close the public hearing and ask for commission action. Oh, I'm sorry, was there anybody from the public? Sorry, is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak? We're ahead. Okay, then this, 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 this item is closed, and I will, uh, take commission action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we approve case number zero-five-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-seven with the revised stipulations and continued effort to identify and implement the, uh, optimum parking solution.
I have a motion to adjourn. I have second from Commissioner Locke, so, motion from Commissioner Williams. I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Okay, let me get my agenda out here. Staff Communications.
Of course, thank you for your attendance this evening, a special meeting. I appreciate you making an effort to get here, and, um, we, our next meeting is April nineteenth. Is that correct?
Fifteenth.
Eighteenth. We have, uh, received the official notification that Joanne has resigned from the Planning Commission, and, um, no surprise, um, and we had interviews last week, and Gary participated, and we'll be forwarding the recommendation to, um, uh, council, uh, April twenty-third. So, unfortunately, we can't get on the April ninth agenda, so April twenty-third is when the, um, new commissioner hopefully will be selected, as well as a new member of the Board of Adjustment. We have a vacancy there, and that individual will serve out the term, the remaining term of Joanne. Otherwise, um, I don't have anything else this evening, unless you have any questions. Congratulations to the new chairman and vice chairman.
Congratulations. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Agreed.